Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is approval of the April invoices. Hopefully, some of you looked through those invoices and I will take a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith? I got ready to write Mary Singer Road.
Really?
Had them all there, just not in right order there.
That's all right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Approval of the April minutes.
I'm hoping we accept the April 11.
I'll second it.
Approval of the April minutes has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, approval of the May agenda. And Joe, I think we've got a change to it.
Yes, there's a postponement.
Okay, do we need to do that now before we approve it, or?
No, because we didn't add any to it, so.
Okay. Okay. I'll take a motion to approve the May agenda.
I'll make a motion for it.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the May agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition, say no. All right. Items for postponement or withdrawal.
We did have one additional postponement. I don't need Cherry Blossom Golf Town Home to ask for one month postponement so they can redesign the project based on comments from workshop.
All right, so if there's anyone in the audience that is here to see or to hear the Cherry Blossom Town Home, Golf Town Homes Phase Seven, that will be postponed until next month. The Cherry Blossom Golf Town Homes being postponed. Okay. Consent agenda?
I think under new business, I believe items A, B, C, and D, and E, so everything on the agenda is eligible.
Okay. All right, we will get to those as we get to them then. Okay, Mr. Perkins, if you will swear everyone in that wishes to speak tonight?
If everyone signed in, please stand, please, and raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the statement you should have made tonight to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? Thank you.
All right, first item on the agenda then is FSP 2024-12. Scallan property, the final subdivision platte to subdivide a 75.7 acre farm into nine parcels, measuring from 1.5 acres to 13.6 acres located at 3613 Cynthia Road.
Just for clarification, it's 5.1 to 13.6, so got a little bit out of order, but that's okay.
Right.
This is, as you stated, a final subdivision platte at 3613 Cynthia Road with four parcels measuring five to six acres, four parcels measuring 10 acres, just about, just varying values, and the remainder tract in the seventh parcel measuring 13.6 acres. This is an item that we had heard last month and opted to continue it to address some concerns on the location of some underground utilities, and I'll get to that in a second. At the workshop, we didn't have a whole lot of updates. We have had an update on some of these utilities locations, so we will get to that when we get there. They propose access off of Cynthia Road with four shared driveways and one single-user driveway. This is an aerial shot of the property here. Again, it's kind of a long parcel, so I've had to rotate it for some of these aerial photos, and you can kind of see the length of it has a lot of frontage on a Cynthia Road. And this is the proposal here, so the first southernmost four parcels are the 10-acre parcels, then two 5-acre parcel pairs, then the remainder that kind of has the corner bend of the parcel, of the parent tract, and then the last two parcels and the northernmost ones are 5-acre parcels. They've kind of grouped it as such here with the colors and everything. And this is just kind of the coloring and everything and the groupings shown here. The colorings I chose specifically to illustrate that these are how their driveways are shared. So on the southern side, the two southernmost 10-acre parcels were sharing entrance along their shared property line. The next two 10-acre parcels were sharing entrance along their shared property line. That is a proposed entrance. It is not one that has been in existing stuff that you can see with aerial imagery, but they do have permit numbers for that one. The two 5-acre parcels just south of the remainder between that and the 10 acres will have an existing entrance that they're sharing off of at their prop shared property line. And then up here, this is where we get some changes. I don't know what happened with that one line, but we have the remainder using an existing driveway, an adjoining parcel owner that does not have road frontage having a shared passway easement or a single-user passway easement along the property line between the 5 acres and the remainder to get to their parcel, and then the entrance to the northernmost 5-acre parcels being shared for those two as well. At the time of workshop, we were still uncertain on where the location of the water line in particular was. The original platte had shown the overhead utility lines, but the underground ones just weren't able to be found and divined. And so they were doing a lot of surveys, trying to find locations and everything like that. They were able to identify the gas line being underneath the existing passway that had been shown previously, so that will have to be relabeled as a access and utility easement for Columbia Gas. And then very recently, like in the past 24 hours, the water line was found that is being used by the landlocked parcel, the Ricketts Farm, that goes through tract six, which is one of the 5-acre parcels. So there may need to be some rearrangements of property line, buildable areas, that type of deal, and an easement should be established for that water line to make sure that the utility provider can service that line. But it is exciting to say that we have found these mysterious hidden water lines. Now we know where they are. So that's kind of the main update.
The purple one up there, we can't see what the top?
That's the overhead utility line.
Oh, okay, all right.
So that one we kind of known. Unfortunately, I didn't realize it was going to get cut off, otherwise I would have adjusted for it accordingly. But that is the overhead that was shown kind of from the beginning, and then we've just added the utility providers as we've made updates. So the 11 by 17 I distributed at workshop does not show the location of the water line. That was found between workshop and today. So we'll need to have that updated version in, and I do have a digital version of it. We just don't have a printed-out one that was available that I could print out for you guys ahead of time. So at the previous meeting, we talked about the two kind of existing stubs unto the northernmost parcels, seven and eight, the two 5 acres. And after discussion and determination, we've kind of found that the one labeled "one" is the one that is along that shared property line that's for those two 5-acre parcels, and the one labeled "two" is being used by an adjoining property owner to the north, so to the, I guess that would technically be the east, not really the north, but the east of the larger farm as a whole that they have been using and everything like that. So we would like to have that identified on the platte, saying this is the user for this, they are responsible for maintenance or whatever circumstances, so that we have it kind of noted and recorded that going forward, where this is something that's identified on a platte and then indeed is going forward with the document. So that was an item that we had also talked about at the meeting previously. Again, this is kind of the general layout here, how the entrances lay out, how the groupings kind of lie, and then the red area showing the passway and also some of the utility lines for the property that's completely landlocked, the Ricketts property. Ultimately, staff recommends approval of the final subdivision platte. I didn't add an additional condition of approval for this application just because we were still talking about the utilities, but we didn't know where they were. So I added condition seven that was not on the April meeting, just saying that all utility lines need to be shown with their respective easements to the Ricketts property specifically to ensure that they have continued access and service to their utilities. Besides that, though, all the existing, or conditions one through six are ones that we had seen previously in the April meeting.
Go back to the very first slide.
This one?
No, the one that showed the, I'm sorry, the first slide that showed the new utility line.
This one?
Yeah, that one right there.
Yes.
So looking at my map and the way it's drawn, I realize they may not be exactly the same, but is that water line, is it basically traveling the same line as the building setback line? Okay, so it's, there's still room to build in there without infringing upon that water line?
Yeah. I would, I would say that that would be possible. It wouldn't be reducing the overall lot width, so by ordinance, we wouldn't be restricting it just with the easements and everything in that area, and then the building setback area, which is kind of create maybe a small sliver in the back that would be wide enough or anything, or space with the easement and building line considered that could be buildable, but we would probably, at least right now, given the confluence of so many easements, you'd see up construction more likely on the southern side closer to the other 5-acre tract and not the remainder.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions for Leece?
What did you say again, that sort of, the future?
Yeah, the pink one is the overhead utility line.
Overhead electric line.
So unfortunately, again, that one did get cut off, but yeah.
Is that just a regular electric line? It's not a?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Rita, do you or the owners have anything to say?
I can just say, this is a cattle farm out on 62, known as the old Bush property, and Mrs. Scallan inherited that. She's lived in DC all of her life, and her children have no interest in it whatsoever, so it's, they're elderly like all of us are getting, and they're ready to get rid of it. The utility thing has been a fiasco. We called 811, they were no help. We paid $1,200 to a detection service who found the gas line, and then a diviner came in yesterday and found the water line, of all things. So we just got a revised platte 20 minutes ago. I sent it to Leece, we're granting all the easements necessary for any of those, but it is in that setback, so it won't affect the buildable.
Okay.
Any questions you have, feel free.
Was there any talk about selling this farm as a whole?
There was talk, but there was no market. There was talk, but no market. I've got a farm on Tate's Creek Road, 96 acres that can't be divided. I've had it listed for two years. Cattle farms, there's just not a lot of market for, especially in that area where they could bring so much more if they're split.
Did, did the water company have to confirm that location? Did, after we told them where it was, do they have any record of it?
They, they don't know because all they've got is their main line and the meter.
Okay.
But they don't have anything else, because it's going as a private line back to Mr. Ricketts.
Okay.
But I talked with him earlier, we're all good, we're, we're, we're good to go.
Okay.
And they'll grant any easements, and, and they've provided those easements on the platte we just sent.
Thank you much. Do we have any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? All right. Being there is none, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval of FSP 2024-12.
I have a motion to approve, a second. All right, I have a motion and a second for approval. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
No.
Mr. Vest?
No.
Mr. Stone?
No.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
And the chair? I'll vote yes, but, but we have a five to four vote not to approve this, the way it stands.
If I might suggest, we need to put some reasons in there since the staff report says they've done everything, and our rulebook says what they have to do, so we need to have some reason why we turned it down, or else we're kind of a sitting duck waiting for them to appeal this and.
Okay. Do any of the no votes, would any of you like to say why you don't think it ought to be approved?
Well, I guess I can say something.
Uh huh.
About it, because I kind of wondered about it last time we talked about it, but it's just, it's a beautiful setting out on Highway 62, one of the best settings, probably between Georgetown and Cynthia. At the time, we put that in nine different tracts, of course, none of it's going to be far, other than just hobby stuff or other small animals of any type or whatever, or who knows, maybe somebody will build a house that's not up to par with some of the others, and they'll pull in five or six vehicles, and they'll set those weeds and all, and those are things we're thinking about, kind of conserve the farming. But, but real small tracts, sometimes it's not, not always the answer, particularly in some spots, and that is a nice, it really is. Anybody agree that, that it's such a nice spot out there? And then we can look at places like Sadieville or down at Bailey Pike or something like that, maybe just name it, because it is healthy and bushy and everything else. My goodness, if I can't build in a place like that, because you can farm on it, and that's just, that's just a thought, not, not in concrete, but that's just the way I feel.
And we were told we did not have to always vote yes.
No, sir, you weren't told, you weren't told that by me.
Yeah, but we, we weren't asking you.
If, well, if, if they, if they meet our requirements, then it becomes virtually a ministerial act, it's not a discretionary act. If it has not met ours, and we have to decide if it's close or not, or if there's some accommodations to be made, then we have discretion. But if they've got setbacks and, and the area and all those things correct, then no, sir, we really don't have.
But we just did.
But we, well, we just did, but we couldn't stand up in court for it.
And we can not approve it, and they still go to fiscal court without an approval from us?
No. No, this is a platte, this isn't, this isn't a zone change.
Oh, okay, a platte.
They would go through a court of law, right?
Yes, yes, it'd be appealed to circuit court.
Okay, all right. All right, any other comments?
Just a second. But Joe, you yourself said that we don't necessarily always have to vote yes at the workshop that came up, and you said it's not automatically yes.
But you, but you need to justify the reason for the no vote, I think. You know, whether.
If justification you mean specific to the ordinances related to the mechanics of it, so to speak, right?
Right.
For the ordinances.
And I would defer to our attorney on, you know, what you need to show, but I would say traffic, you know, series of piano key law, I don't want to lead you anywhere, but I mean, reasons that this doesn't fit into the, you know, doesn't, doesn't mean our ordinances or.
Well, I think in, we have been talking for over a year with our comprehensive plan and the future land use, and the one thing we keep hearing over and over and over is to conserve farmland, and this is, like Mr. Stone said, this is primary farmland and.
But he also did mention about the cars and number of vehicles per, so there you go, there's a reason.
If I might just add, yes, we've talked about that, not just in the last few years, we've talked about this for 40 years, preserving farmland, and if you look at our ordinance, we've attempted that with 5-acre tracts, we've attempted that with clusters, we've attempted that with preserved land where there are clusters. That's all we've done. We don't have any rules other than that to do that. Well, the comprehensive plan sets out the blueprint, the regulations actually set out what we have to approve, what we don't have to approve, and what people can do. We have not followed up those comments with regulations. So that, that's why, no, sir, we don't have that kind of discretion to just turn it down because we don't like it. It's, if it follows our rules, and those are the only rules we have, then we're, we're supposed to take care of it. Now, that doesn't mean we can't cajole them and do some other things and maybe make it a little bit better, but as far as saying no without reason, that, that really isn't justified, no, sir.
Reason associated with a specific regulation?
It's a little bit grayer, but I think you can do it if, in fact, this were, say, on a tiny road where traffic would be a problem. We don't have a specific reg on that, but I think that would be legitimate, assuming we made a finding of that and we had a basis for that. If there were no utilities available, which of course there are, but if there weren't, there's not much else, because our rules say 5-acre tracts, this certain width, this visibility, I mean, and all that's there.
Yeah, I think they've met all the boxes, they ticked off all the boxes, even though I feel like, you know, my feelings say try to preserve it, but based on what's in front of me, I would have to vote yes, that they meet the criteria.
I would also say that I appreciate the fact that there are three 10-acre or more 10-acre tracts than there are 5-acre tracts. They could have busted it up more than they did, and in Kentucky, 10 acres is a farm. And I think people forget that, and 10 acres is a farm that somebody that has a full-time job can still farm and work, and we need to respect those people as well.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate all of you guys, and, and I understand your no votes, there's nothing personal whatsoever. I just crawled off a bush hog myself, so I'm, I'm a farmer at heart, and I love the land, and I hate to see what's happening in our county too, but until they can change some of the cluster rules and some of the other rules that'll help preserve farmland, we have what we have, and these people need to sell now, not tomorrow. So it's, you know, it's, is there anything we can do to make this more appealing? We would probably try to work with you. I don't think anybody is served well by going to circuit court, except the attorneys.
No offense, Charlie.
Believe me, I want no more work than I have to have.
We're not paying any extra.
Mr. Cornet?
Roy Cornet, I've got no dog in the fight other than interested citizen. I can see this from two sides. Developers paid the engineers to do everything in court and what the rules are. They've got it here, and I think probably rightfully had it expected to be approved. Other side of me, I agree with conservation stuff, and I agree with Mr. Stone. This would be a whole lot better for everybody involved if it'd been designed as a cluster. Then, you know, but, but to tell them, okay, go back and design a cluster, they've already spent their money on engineering, that's not fair. I'm thinking that let's do something about a cluster, I said this, to where it greases kids, to encourage people like this development to do a cluster as opposed to 5-acre lots. Just, I just sitting there thinking about it, you know, the way the ordinance, if I'm speaking, Joe, you have three parcels off one private driveway, is that correct? Could we refine things a little bit where there's three acre and three-quarter lots or less on one private driveway? And those driveways be relatively short, because we all know that county roads expensive, and if you go in there and put all these on one county road, that, that really manifests huge amounts of development costs. If you got a driveway, private driveway accessing three acre and three-quarter lots, that diminishes the development cost dramatically and would help encourage people to do the clusters. What that does this, I don't know, it's up to you guys.
And I do think Jessica's comments are very valid, too. I mean, the fact that there are 10-acre lots, I think it's kudos to them and the development to not try to chop it up as small as possible, and I do think, Charlie and I don't always agree, but certainly, you know, our job, while I am also for how do we preserve that prime farmland, at the end of the day, we have a set of ordinances that we have, that we're coming to make decisions based off of, and ultimately, when a proper, a property owner decides to sell, they need to meet those ordinances, and when they do that, it's, leaves little discretion for us unless there is a significant issue related to the ordinances or those exceptions, as Charlie said, related to, it's a small road, can it handle that traffic and those sort of gray areas, so.
Mary, to Jessica's point, I've sold some 5-acre tracts, one of them, they've got 140 chickens. They're, they're producing a lot more meat than maybe even this 70-acre farm. A lot more protein, eggs and, eggs and meat. So I, I don't think, and, and we do, we've got four 10-acre tracts and a 13-acre track, I don't think we should discount the small tracts. And I saw Frank Wiseman the other day, and all of you know Frank, and he was on the board forever, and he said, everybody's down in that 5-acre development. He said, that's the only way I could afford land when I came to Scott County, and now they have a larger farm, but they had to start somewhere, and they were able to start with a 5-acre track. James, to your comment, we will have a standard of, of home that's going to be probably 2,000 square feet or more, and we always write in there, no non-running vehicles. We have restrictions that should help with those concerns, because we want this to be higher-priced property and therefore nicer homes. Won't be any, there won't be any single wides or double wides. It will not be a trashy subdivision at the end of the day.
What's happening on the property right now?
It's a cattle farm.
Leased out, you said that they live outside.
Leased out to a young farmer that runs cattle lot, yeah. Anything else I can offer?
No crops, just raising cattle?
Yeah, that's all. They don't raise any roe crops. I don't, maybe there was tobacco raised a long time ago, but none of that road frontage has been plowed forever, maybe back behind the barn that could have had tobacco. It's a rolling farm, it's not a flat farm, and when we did the soil, we did the perk test, we actually are going to have to add some dirt in order for the soil to be deep enough for a normal system. That, that's all I can offer.
Okay, after hearing from, go right ahead.
No, I was gonna say, if the votes stand as they are, should a motion be made, Charlie, very specifically by someone that's a no, saying specifically the reasons and as they relate to the.
Well, yes, I'd prefer that. We, I think we need to justify our vote.
Just standing as it is right now.
Yeah.
Or after hearing from Ms. Jones and Mr. Perkins, that there needs to be justification according to regulations why you would, would vote no. Is there anyone that would want to change their vote to a yes vote? And hearing none, then we need a justification for voting no.
I was about to open my mouth. I did not realize a lot of things that Joe brought up, and then, you know, exactly what all the, what our purpose was there. And I'll be honest with you, I'd kind of be a hypocrite if I kept my no vote there, because I just subdivided my property into half up in Sadieville. So yeah, if I can, I would like to change my vote to yes.
Okay. Mr. Perkins, do we need to do anything official other than just changing the vote?
I'm not aware of any reason why you can't call for, does anyone care to change their vote, and why a member can't?
Okay.
I can tell you, we've not had that issue come up in 40 years. Not that I'm that old or anything. But, but I've.
Thank you, Rita.
I've never had that come up.
All right, well, we're doing it now. All right, so Mr. Smith will change his no vote to a yes vote. Is there anyone else?
I'd like my comment.
Yes, sir.
To Rita, of course, she knows me, and the reason I voted no is because of this, everybody, we had this conversation after you left in workshop. Scott County is wanting to save all this farmland, and in my personal opinion, you have a farm like that, that that family owns several acres, not only this parcel, if I'm correct. acres, not only this parcel, if I'm correct.
No, I'm sorry, this is all she has.
This is all that she's got.
The other parcel was her brother's.
Was, okay. I just, I have a hard time voting yes on Cynthia Road for one, and two, that's a nice farm, I hate to see it busted up. Then on the other hand, you know me, they own it, they should have the right to subdivide it. I agree with that. So I'm kind of like Mr. Cornet, I'm on the fence. I guess I use my personal preference over everything else, but, you know, that's, it's kind of like the king had cake and eat it, too, you know what I mean? And that's dilemma that we're in, sitting on this board. Even though it meets all of the criteria, you know, if we don't like it or want to approve it because of a certain thing that we're trying to accomplish, because, just like Brad and I talked after workshop, you know, we need to do something now if we're going to save any farmland in Scott County. It should have been done 10 years ago. And, you know, you got to start somewhere.
I think there's a comprehensive plans responsibility to try to make some of those changes.
And then follow that with regulations.
I mean, I agree with that, but, you know, I just, I have a hard time seeing that busted up. I mean, that's a nice, you know, there's a lot of farms that's gone. I mean, I grew up here.
Drive out of a lot of roads.
Lot of us did.
Drive out of a lot of roads, right?
But hey, it's all to chase the mighty dollar.
That's what turns the world, you know?
That's a shame.
We have a terrible problem of growth in this area. But go to some areas that don't have any growth, and they would give what they would give for the problem.
So we need, as a commission, in our workshops, not just be looking at what's coming before us for the planning and zoning meeting, but looking to adjust some of our regulations. We need to spend the time doing that, so that we have a basis to stand on to say no if we need to.
And the method of doing that is, it arises here, we have public hearings, we make recommendations to the legislative bodies.
Yeah.
And then they adopt or make adjustments. But if they adopt, then that becomes the new regulations.
Yes.
I would love to know where there's not growth. You said places that don't, that would like to have the problem we've got. I don't know.
Eastern Kentucky.
The entirety of Kentucky.
Yeah.
I was just down in Pikeville.
They want jobs, they have to go outside of their.
Pikeville has coal money, but they're also running it.
There's a lot of those people moving here.
They are.
Yeah.
And need places to live. Like it or not, it's a reality, because the jobs are here, not there.
Well, that big road's going in down there.
Kentucky's too.
I still, the industry has to come.
Right.
Takes time.
But I mean, it's a, it's a perfect fact. Scott County used to be a farming community, and now it's manufacturing community. So how do you save farmland in a manufacturing community?
You make farming profitable. I mean, it has to, for a farmer, it has to be, it has to, money-wise, makes sense to keep your farm and run it unless you've got a pot of money just to sit on, you know, and be a hobby farmer.
Right. You also have to have people that want to farm.
Yeah, yeah.
And you have to have people that have access to the funds and the capital to farm. No one can afford.
And generally, that's only if someone already owns the land.
If you inherit the land. I don't know anybody that can walk out and buy a 96-acre farm when they have never been a farmer before, and that's what they want to do.
Support it by farming.
And support it by farming.
That's the lack of the market for farmland.
That's exactly it. So, and when you do get a 10-acre tract, you do have to start somewhere. And I have, I know people that started on 10 acres, and then they did buy the adjacent property, and then they grew their farm, or they went and bought a larger farm, when they're capable.
There won't be any of those.
You have to give people the opportunity.
There won't be any of those, though. When you break it all down to five-acre trucks, there'll be no larger farm.
But not everybody in this community wants to see all these farms go away. I mean, there's a lot of people here that doesn't want to see us being, become a huge city.
But do those same people want to farm it?
Do they want to farm it, or contribute to the farmers?
A lot of them do. A lot of them want to.
Or do they just want to have it in their backyard, right?
Rita knows that, well, it's.
But can they?
Farming's hard work.
Or they can't rent it.
And if you don't want to farm it, and I respect James farming, right, Brad farming, my grandfather was a farmer. My father had zero interest in it when he retired from Toyota.
There are people out here that still are farming.
There are. And if they can afford to buy the huge chunk of land, right, but I think.
And everyone has the right to sell their land. We've had that conversation a million times. If someone said, you can't sell your house in whatever subdivision, that you want to sell it, you can't sell that anymore. You have to hold on to that. Well, I want to move to be with my grandchildren. Well, you're not allowed. You're not allowed to sell that.
Yeah.
Is that fair?
No one's telling them to not sell their land.
But that's it, selling it.
But your restriction on who you can sell it to.
In that vein, though, what if you wanted to sell your house in front of Arkansas? You can't, because it doesn't fit where that, so you've got farms in the country.
Not necessarily.
You're not going to have.
You couldn't do it because of the ordinances with the board.
Ordnance, right?
Here, the ordinance.
Yeah, but they've met those standards.
And that's the difference. Yeah. And that's, and that's it. You have to, there has to be a mechanism, right?
Okay. We've, we've agreed that we need to make some changes to our regulations, and, but we're not going to be able to do that here tonight. We have a final vote of five to four to approve the Scallan property, and we will move on.
When's our next comprehensive plan meeting?
The end of the month, end of the month.
I would, I would say certainly encourage everybody to come, and, because that's a big part of laying the groundwork for what the future looks like, right?
We'll discuss that later tonight here. Okay, under new business, FSP 2024-18. Rhett, correct me again, the pronunciation, I butchered. Caristo property, a final subdivision plat to divide one 14.4-acre parcel from 88.75 acres, leaving a 77.35-acre remaining tract located at 2011 Burton Pike.
Okay, before us is FSP 2024-18. Again, this is a final subdivision plat to remove a 11.4-acre parcel from an 88.75-acre parent parcel. It will be leaving a 77-acre parcel remainder. It's just off Burton Pike by way of Cincinnati Road. There are no variances on this application, and we are recommending approval. This is the subject property, all 88 acres or so of it. Again, you see Burton Road there to the left. The property itself and everything surrounding it is zoned A1. In 2014, 110 acres of this property was divided from 202 acres, and I believe I've got another plat to show you here as well. This is just to show you the precedent of why it's before us. It is a major subdivision having been divided before. This is the plat as we've got it today. Again, it is an 11.4-acre piece off of a larger 88-acre piece, excuse me. It will be using an existing access there on the south end. It will share it with the parent parcel. There are no new accesses currently asked for. However, if there are so in the future, Burton is a state-maintained road that will need Kentucky Transportation Cabinet approval. The only major easement that does encroach on this property there in the west side, it is, I believe, a 40-foot easement to Owen Electric. The easement does lie mostly within an unbuildable area, kind of within the setback line, so it doesn't quite affect the buildable area. Being 11 acres and some, it does not need Health Department approval, being larger than 10. And also with that easement there and a pond to the north, there is still a good amount of buildable area. Let's see. Again, we're dividing 11.4 acres from an existing 88.75-acre parcel located at 2011 Burton. This property and everything around it is zoned A1. This parcel does exceed the five-acre minimum that we require in A1 zones. Also, it does have all the minimum setbacks, lot width, excuse me, density requirements, et cetera. There's no building site proposed, but again, as I spoke before, there's plenty of room on there for any proposed home site. The new parcel itself does have 374 feet of frontage, which would give it proper separation if a new access were applied for. However, that is not the case currently, but if in the future it is, it will need Kentucky Transportation Cabinet approval. Overall, we are recommending approval of this final subdivision plat. Again, our first four conditions there are pretty standard. The one that I've added at the end, again, is if in the future any new entrance onto Burton Pike was applied for, it will need Kentucky Transportation Cabinet approval.
And then, as far as being a final subdivision plat, that's a consideration, because we have, it's been divided before.
Yes.
Final one. So there can be no other changes to this property unless they.
Any other divisions will have to be brought before us and applied for. And this subject property, again, you know, the minimum that'd be able to take it off of would be five acres, you know, leaving a remainder of 6.4.
Any other questions for Rhett? I need to apologize, this was consent-eligible.
I need the practice.
Is there anyone in the audience that has questions about this piece of property? All right, so we can, I will take a motion to approve FSP 2024-18.
I make the motion to prove it based on him saying it's the final of this particular property.
I have a motion by Mr. Jesse. And a second by Mr. Garrett, Ms. Singer.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Jesse.
Yes.
Mr. Vest.
Yes.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. If owners will see Mr. Perkins up here to sign some paperwork. And the next item is FSP 2024-19, the Lee property, it's a final subdivision plat to divide one 20.61-acre parcel into three parcels. Well, those numbers don't matter. I'll just say located at 1599 Graves Road. And again, this is consent-eligible. Is there anyone that is opposed to this piece of property being subdivided? Or have any questions? It is consent-eligible, so I will take a motion.
Please, please, please.
Yes, sir.
Willie Cassidy, we own the 53 acres back to Stone.
So you would like to hear?
Excuse me?
So you would like to hear the reason for the, or you just have a question?
I've got a question.
Okay.
I can present if you'd like. That'd be fine.
Okay, go ahead, Rhett, and present it there, please.
Again, we've got the Lee property here, application FSP 2024-19. As Chairman Mifflin had said before, it's a 20-acre parent tract being divided into three parcels, one at 5.16, one at 8.05, and another at 7.4. Again, we are at 1599 Graves Road and Stamping Ground, zoned A1. Seabree Road would be the next nearest road to access. There are no variances on this application. Overall, we are recommending approval. Here's the overhead here of the parcel. You see the frontage of Graves right there to the left-hand side towards the west. There's a pond that does have drainage in and out of it, we'll get into that in a moment. Again, everything, including the parcel in question, is zoned A1. Again, this is just more precedence for you as to why this application is before us. It has been subdivided before. This plat is from 1999. You see the subject parcel all the way there to the north, it was a much larger piece at the time. This is the full plat as we've received before us. You have it in your packets, and I'll get something a little easier to see here. Here you see highlighted are three parcels. Again, they range from five acres all the way up to eight. The parcels 7B and 7C there are going to have a shared access along the northern property line, so to speak. That entrance has been proposed. It does have preliminary approval by the state. However, at time of staff report writing, and to my knowledge currently, I don't know that all the paperwork has been turned in, but it has been received preliminary approval. The tract on the bottom there will be utilizing an existing entrance. Also, to note, there is an existing home on the lower parcel. It does not meet our current setback requirements, however, it is, does predate those ordinances. And here in just a moment, I'll get more so into this drainage easement here. So this is the drainage that moves what I found to be west to east across the property. You see the pond there that kind of collects the water as it drains off other properties, as well as Graves Road, et cetera. You can see the tree and brush line as you move farther east along. It's apparent that, you know, there is enough water moving through there that the trees and plants really like it. I've heard commentary that it's not substantial. However, it is marked as an easement on the plat. As such, there will be no development or construction allowed that'll disturb or encroach across, encroach upon, excuse me, said easement. Overall, again, we're looking at a 20-acre parcel being divided into three lots, one at 5.16, one at 8.05, and another at 7.4. All of the lots show the appropriate setback width and lot size requirements. All of them are under 10 acres. They will all need a Health Department evaluation and approval for septic or lagoon prior to construction. Now, the newly proposed entrance does meet our separation requirements of 300 feet or more for these type of parcels. And the one in question does, again, have preliminary approval. As far as I know, the applicant or the representative may speak to more of whether that's in hand or not. Tract 7B and C are impacted by that drainage easement illustrated on the plat. And again, no temporary or permanent construction, disturbance of the land, storage of material, et cetera, will be allowed to obstruct or hinder the easement. Overall, we are recommending approval. And again, all four of the first conditions there are our standard ordinance-based conditions. Number five there is, any new entrance, including the one that's proposed here, will require Kentucky District 7 approval. I'll entertain any questions.
Okay. Just for the record, on our agenda, instead of hitting a parentheses mark, we hit a nine, and it shows 95.16 acres instead of a parentheses 9.6. That's why I said the numbers aren't adding up.
Oh, I've just got my notes from the presentation in front of me, I'm sorry. Yeah.
And I don't know if the agenda's part of the record or not, but on the presentation itself, it's got nine.
Yeah. And I'm pretty sure I checked the staff report against the presentation stuff this morning. If there's any discrepancy or anything needs to be changed in the record, just let me know.
Yes, sir. Come on up to the stand, please, and state your name.
It's Richard Cassidy.
We own 1669, it's 53 acres, just above those top two, I can't see it, 7B and 7C, I guess. And we raise registered Angus cattle. The fence line all up and down that property line is terrible. The fence is holding the post up. Okay? Who's going to be responsible for helping me fix that fence? The current owner or these two new owners?
Current owner until the new owners buy it, and the new owners, so whoever the owner is.
Is it a joint fence? Is it on the property line?
It's on the property. In the last two, three years, the renter that the current owner's had on it, his cattle have got over on us once or twice every summer. And now that I've got these registered cows over here, I just, I really don't want a $4,000 cow hooking up with a $1,200 bull from the stockyard. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we bought our 53 acres off of Mary Bell Hughes, and when we bought it, it was nothing but a hedge apple farm.
So you're farming your land.
Yeah. And we've got about 22 acres of it cleared now in pasture. And we own a commercial sheep metal company, too, so it's not our primary, but we're looking long-term. I'd love to buy it, but I can't pay $80,000 for a piece of property that I'm going to graze cattle on. I just, I just, that don't make no sense. But.
But you do have a good question, because I've always wondered that too. I know statute is while it's one piece, you're responsible for the half to the right, and they're responsible for the half to the left, but when, once you divide it-
Same rule.
So if you've redone, say in the last year, he's redone his half to the right, now he's got to do half of the other half. See what I'm saying?
No, because it's still one piece property now.
I mean, I know, man.
You're talking when it's something-
But like, say he went in now, did his half of fence brand spanking it, and then you'd subdivide that off and take the back part, well, congratulations, now you get to do half of the other half.
Because the people that'll buy that, they'll build a house, and they'll buy them a horse or two, and it'll be a ranch, you know? And I really don't want them coming through that fence getting to me. I've got four strands of high tensile stainless stretched across those posts, and once or twice a year, some of that fence will break and flop over and ground it out, and I have to fix it. And so I'm just curious as to, are they going to fix that fence before they sell it? Or will I have to haggle it with two new owners when they do sell it?
So do we have a representative for the existing owners here?
Sam? Sam, the question is, is the fence going to be fixed before it's sold, or is it going to be between him and the new owners?
We do not have any attention between him and the new owners.
Okay, so is there any recourse I've got as far as pushing to get the fence fixed?
There's a statutory provision that allows you, and it's been years since I've dealt with it, but it allows you to either do the work and, and require reimbursement, it may require even upfront. I can't tell you that because I haven't read the thing in ages. It's probably been modified a bit maybe since then, but it shares the responsibility. So you might, before it changes hands, look into that and see about getting that responsibility exercised.
Okay, I mean, I don't, it's theirs, I don't care what they do with it, if they want to sell it, whatever.
No, no, I understand it.
I'm all about that.
I'm just talking about the fence.
About the fence.
Yeah, and I mean, we've got a junkyard behind us now, and got a foreign range on one side now, and a diesel hydraulic shop just right there on one of the lots that they privileged cut off of this, so it's sort of turned into its own little industrial park right there, yeah, out in the country. And I just, I just wanted to come speak my piece, that's all, but-
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? From the commission?
That really is a new problem, because everybody's got their own deal. I mean, nobody's got, they don't want to fix it anymore. Usually whoever wants to graze it or whatever, they're going to have to do it, because that's too broad. And it's hard, like, it's, it's hard to sustain it, you've got to go through the line, perfectly get enforcement. I've already had a couple of $12,000 bulls.
So you could put, you could put a lien against it, though, I guess he spends the money on it.
Yeah.
But you've got to do it legally.
All right, if there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion for approval of FSP 2024-19.
I have a motion by Ms. Singer and a second by Mr. Stone. Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield? Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. If owners will come up here and see Mr. Perkins outside.
It was. Not a good poker face.
All right. The next item is also consent-eligible, FSP 2024-20, the Hicks and Sescup property, a final subdivision plat to subdivide 44.63 acre farm into three five acre tracts and the remainder located at 120 Muir Lane. Is there anyone here that would like to hear the details of this or oppose to it?
I do have an email from someone who is unfortunately unable to attend.
And we've got somebody behind you that would like to-
Even better.
Okay, that's what we're here for.
I'm sorry, I'm too short for that. This is a final subdivision plat to subdivide 44.6 acre farm into three five acre tracts, and then the remainder, which I believe is about 24 acres, at the intersection of Muir Lane and Midway Road. It's an agriculturally zoned parcel and has access to both. The remainder would be using an access onto Muir Lane that then connects to Midway Road, and it appears that the proposed tracts would all have access onto Midway Road directly. There are no variances associated with this application, and staff does recommend approval of the application. So this is, oh, this is the larger farm here, so I kind of wanted to have it a little bit more zoomed in, so you can see Muir to the north, Midway to the east, Creekside, I believe, is the, yeah, anyway, there's a, our, yes, to the east, yes, across the roadway. And then if you were to continue traveling north, and I've kind of zoomed out here with the zoning, you can see Ironworks Road, Soards and Craig Lane, to the south you can see the Elkhorn Creek, and then you can see the entirety of that residential neighborhood to the east between the Ironworks and Midway. So this farm has been subdivided before, we've seen it several times, and then this is the proposed subdivision right now. So this is the kind of entrance layout, so the remainder would be using the existing entrance off of Muir Lane, the two, five, or the three five acre tracts would share two driveway locations, as shown, so the northernmost of one, of them, which is the one identified as number one, is across from an existing driveway, and then shared entrance two is, I don't believe is directly across from an existing driveway, but it is in general proximity. This is a state-maintained road, Midway Road, so if we are looking for entrance locations, they do need to get KYTC approval and then adhere to all of our rules for entrance separation as well. I have identified on this map, because we are aware that this is pretty south in the county, two karst depressions that they've identified, and there is a note on the subdivision plat that before any kind of activity happens in those areas, they need to have geotech surveys come out to make sure that those are safe to put really anything on. They are to the rear of the tract C2, and a little piece of it is on C3, and then the, right at the intersection of Muir and Midway, which is part of the remainder tract, there is another kind of pocket of karst area. So those have been shown, and they would need to get geotechnical surveys out there if they were looking to do anything, any type of activity, to make sure that the extent of the karst area is understood, and no one is unsafely putting stuff and houses on that type of area. This is a more zoomed-in thing here, showing the kind of distribution, so the southernmost of the two entrances would serve tracts C3 and C4, and then the northernmost of the entrances closer to the Muir-Midway intersection would serve tract C2. And then this is kind of a general idea of the layout here, so on the 11 by 17, you can kind of see, and they have shown, that fence that's bisecting tract C3, so it does make it a little bit confusing, so I wanted to illustrate with the aerial imagery where you can clearly see the fence, where the fence does not determine where they want to put this proposed property line. So instead, it kind of straddles that, or it goes down the middle of C3, and then it divides accordingly. Besides all of that, staff ultimately, after analysis and review, determined that this does meet all of our expectations rules for subdivision, and recommends approval, subject to six conditions. First four are typical four, the fifth one is just about clarifying who these users are. If you look kind of at that 11 by 17 area, it's kind of unclear, and they haven't quite specified who's using what responsibilities, that type of thing. So we do want that clarified on the plat and in all necessary paperwork. And then just that any further subdivision requires rezoning to the A5, just to make sure that we're going through our proper review processes and making people more aware that that is a zone district that does exist, and we do require you rezoning.
All right, thank you, Elise. Any questions from the commission? All right, I think we, you said you had a phone?
I can, I can let them speak, and then I'll kind of act as the other person, give them an opportunity first.
Ladies, if you would, do you still have any questions?
Yes.
All right, please come up to the microphone and state your name, please.
My name is Mary Gregory. I'm a resident of Scott County and Muir Lane. I really want to express my concerns about this proposed subdivision off of Muir Lane. First of all, Muir Lane is a lane, which normally is a narrow road, and this is a very narrow road. I guess I have several questions. One is, were the driveways for this proposed property going to come off of Muir Lane or Midway Road? I couldn't hear, hon, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the only proposed driveway that will come off of Muir Lane is the existing driveway that is serving the existing home and farm operation.
Okay.
The new parcels have frontage, and their driveways are located off of Midway.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. That helps, that helps a lot. Also, Betty Ann Monroe, I think, emailed the planning commission, and she, did you get it, hon?
That's the lead address.
Thank you, okay. This is a beautiful piece of property. Now I know that Mr. Lundie and Mr. Greeley, when they had this property as horse farm, it was one of the prettiest pieces there is, was, is now. We live at 178 Muir Lane, which is the very end of Muir Lane. We've lived there 49 years. It was us and the Lundies. And I'm going to tell you, this really bothers me. We're looking at, my home was built in 1890, I don't want to go there, I don't want to tell you that I have chickens or anything, I don't want to go there. But when you look, there is no subdivision off of Muir Lane at all. Many of us moved out there to be in the country, I know we did. There are, I'm trying to find my notes. This lane now has 15 residents on it, none of it's subdivided. Seven of them are horse farms, which is beautiful. And there's a lot of traffic. Midway Road is crazy busy. So we're looking at, and I'm not sure anymore, I received a letter dated April, several of us did, dated April the 11th, and it says preliminary subdivision request to subdivide 20 acres broken into three five acre tracts. Now that's all I've known this whole time since April. And then I look here, and it says something about 44.63 acre farm. Is that different or not? I mean, I may be misunderstanding this. So this is saying, on your agenda, 44.63 acre farm into three five acre tracts. Go ahead, hon.
So I can say that her letter is correct from what our letter record is. However, these, as has been shown by our plats in our records that we can see with the digital things, this is, I would anticipate to be a mistyping. Maybe, I don't know, but I'm looking for the realtor, but I don't recognize anybody that looks like her, so. Oh, oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't see you out of the corner of my eye. So I don't know if you can speak to the letter?
Uh, well, it's probably just the miswording. It is a 44 acre farm, but she's now taking three five acre tracts and selling the key to the remainder of the farm.
Okay.
Does that answer that question for you?
It answers that question. I don't know if you've been up Midway Road, and you've seen the industrial park in Woodford County?
Yes.
Not good. So now you're thinking about doing three five acre tracts onto Midway Road, and then you're going to go up Midway Road over the bridge, at one time it was a one-lane bridge, it was wonderful. Now it's not. We are, we're destroying Scott County. And it's not just because I live on Muir Lane, that is a beautiful piece of land. So you go over the bridge, which I'm two miles from Midway, and you get into the other crowded nightmare of industrial park. And I'm tired, I'm tired of having to fight, and I have fought Woodford County for a couple of things. And now I see they're, they're talking about taking Mr. Lundie's horse farm, Mr. Greeley's horse farm, and whoever now has bought this, three five acre tracts. You know, maybe 10 acres, I agree with you, hon, what you said earlier. You can't do anything with five acres other than mow it, and we're sick of that. So you did get Betty Ann Monroe's email, okay?
I do have it for our record.
You do?
It came in this morning, around today, so I don't have, I was not able to distribute it to anybody or anything like that, but I just have a copy on my phone.
Okay, and of course, our biggest concern is Muir Lane, but also Midway Road because of the traffic. If you come off of Muir Lane and take a right on Midway Road, if there's going to be three five acre lots, and those cars are coming out there in three different driveways, and I know it's not all day, every day, I know all this, but the traffic has become difficult. I'm just really asking, also, because it is farmland back in there, you're looking at horse trailers, quite often that go back on Muir Lane off of Midway Road. You're looking at tractor trailers, even though Woodford County would tell you tractor trailers don't go on Midway Road. Well, it's insane. Midway Road is a little tiny country road. Many of us really moved to Muir Lane to live in the country. I don't want a subdivision. Nobody on Muir Lane wants a subdivision. The only thing, the thing I'm asking you is to please think about this, and maybe if you haven't driven back there, to go drive it, to go look at really what this would do. Think about who's already living there. We really like it the way it is.
Well, I will say, I've been down back that way several times, bringing Mr. Greeley Hay at Wintergreen Farm, and then the new gentleman, who must be your neighbor on your side of the road, the, where the big pond is, and the old part of the Wintergreen Farm there.
Yes, yes.
Looks like a really-
There's actually two fishing lakes up there, and then we had the old pond at our old house.
So I know exactly what you mean by the size of Muir Lane, and- So I know exactly what you mean by the size of Muir Lane. And the one thing about this, as you see from tonight, we don't have a whole lot of say so, but we can say no on some things. But it doesn't, it's not going to affect your traffic on Muir Lane at all.
No, but as coming off of it, it is.
Midway Road, it'll add three houses to Midway, which is unbelievably narrow. And the old one lane bridge, the only thing I hate about it was how the drop off was so.
It is. In fact, your car bounces.
Yes, it would. And I do agree it's too narrow. But the rest of that road has grown up the same way, and even the tracks are even smaller past you all, from before P&amp;Z was involved, and then people got the houses and they've got smaller lots.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do I understand correctly, it's two shared entrances, is that right?
Correct, yes.
On Midway Road, not on Muir. There won't be an additional.
No additional on Midway, just, or no additional on here, just two driveways.
On Midway. Now, one of the. So the property that has the sink halls, that's not on this tract of land that's going to be?
So, I will have a point of clarification now.
Okay.
My staff reports reference a remainder value that was, that's shown on the plat, but that is inaccurate to what they are requesting. Initially, when they came to us, they came with four five acre tracts in the remainder, which would be 24 acres. In reality, with this proposal that they brought before us today, the remainder is 29 acres, because they eliminated that fifth acre parcel, or that fifth parcel because.
Where that landed.
Because that parcel is up here. And it was identified that all this carst activity here would make it very difficult to build on.
It really would.
So.
It's got two huge sink halls on it.
So those are not part of the, well, the majority of them are not on the newly proposed five acre.
That's on the existing farm now.
That will be on the existing farm.
Yeah.
Does that kind of make sense on the clarification on the numbering?
Yeah, yeah, I understood it.
Now, you've already talked about this, and I appreciate that. 10 acres might be, might not be as bad. To me, anything would be bad. But when we're talking about Scott County, and when people go about buying property, let's not just buy it to sell it. Let's, if you're not going to do something agriculturally with it, don't buy it. We have got to stop this. And as you can tell, I'm coming with my heart. And again, I live at the very end of Muir Lane, very end. And I'd appreciate if you just didn't do it. So, but I thank you, and if you did, if you, I have extras if you want it, but.
I like the head of coffee.
Yes, sir. And then, again, that is not 20 acres, it's 44. Is that correct?
Is that what you said?
Okay, okay, okay. And I will give you each one if you'd like.
And I hope you realize that we have no control over when somebody buys a piece of property, what they're going to do with it.
I know, I know, but.
We can't demand that they farm it, or put a welding shop on it, or anything else.
And you know, we're talking about it.
Scott County that's not been addressed, and that isn't the bigger scope of things about this issue. This has been, we've been talking about this in this commission for the last two or three months, and, but it's beyond the scope of what we are allowed to do. But it's something as a community, and this community is going to have to make that decision. Unfortunately, we can't make that.
Well, this is, I would count it a historical piece of property. Even the old home on it was built in the early 1900s. It's neat. Enough for me.
Thank you.
Mr. Cornet?
And that's been said about this the last several meetings. I would be hopeful that there's actually people that's going to get together, try to come up with some type of a solution. Something's going to have to be done. That's what the community wants to be done. We just don't have the authority to do it.
Boy, Cornet, real quick. Mother and dad lived across the road from the Lower Blue Doctor, or Blue Arrow for 40 years. Jones right here, tell you, the traffic coming from Midway toward the north moves pretty quick. There's a hump there. So sight distance is an issue. And my mom and dad had to be careful pulling out of driveway, my guess is.
Oh, had a scene problem?
Yep. And so the reason they've moved those, that entrance down, as far as I have, I'm sure it's because of sight distance, but that is an issue there, because they're really moving out, coming, going north there from Midway, and that sight distance is an issue. I'm going to go watch my granddaughter play.
Is that on the top of the hill, where that area is?
Top of the hill is kind of right here.
Okay.
And if mother and dad live here, their driveway came up about here. You had to be careful when you pull out of there. Jones is up here.
And then the bus stops there at Creekside and Midway Road, the school bus. So it's like, right. Just let y'all pass. When you looked at where the entrance was, Elise?
Thank you.
Was that taken into consideration?
Hi, I'm Tess Hutterback. I was the realtor who sold Kim Hicks the land when she bought the 44 acres. And it was on the market for over a year that way, because as you guys pointed out, buying large tracts of land is not affordable for people who are farmers. Kim actually has horses. She ran a boarding facility in stamping ground for many years. She got to a point where she couldn't afford to keep that running into the boarding facility and have a life. So she decided to downsize. She was going to buy half of this property at the time she bought it. Hill Parker had it listed. He already was planning on selling it this way in the 20 and 24, something give or take. It wasn't going well, so her family stepped in and purchased the whole thing so that we knew that we could sell off part of it. She never intended to keep it. She didn't need, she didn't need 44 acres. She was downsizing from 66. It was always the intention. Hill Parker had already had a survey done by Pat Darnell to do this exact thing. So that is how we went into this. We have tried for over a year to market it as 20 acres. We've tried. I have met, I can't even tell you how many people I've walked that land with, and it's beautiful. My husband and I thought about buying it. It's not easy to sell that kind of land anymore. It's just so expensive. And there are so many people, I sell mostly hobby farms. It's 90% of my business. And there are so many people that are just dying to have five acres so they can have their horse on it. And they can. I own six acres in Scott County, and I have four horses and a donkey. So it's possible. It's, you have to be creative, but it's possible. And there's a lot of people that really want that. So that's why I hate to see the contention between everyone. Like, it's not like Kim wants to sell this and put together a subdivision. She wants to be able to keep her farm, have her horses, give these folks the ability to have their hobby farm, possibly have a goat or a donkey or some chickens. These aren't people who are wanting to cut this up and not make it farmland, or not make it the country. There's just so many people who want to live in the country now. I mean, since COVID, it's gone crazy. And so the ability to have that is really amazing, you know, the ability to be able to buy five acres and be someone who has a full-time job and come home and ride their horse and have it on their own property. It's unbelievable. It was my dream my whole life, and I did it 10 years ago. And I'm just grateful for it, and I try to help people do that every day now. So, yeah, go ahead.
I do understand your side a thousand percent. And what you just said is to be able to afford to do that. What are those five acre tracts going to go for?
We have them at 240 apiece.
Okay. So it wasn't affordable at 20 acres?
Right.
It wasn't, you said it wouldn't.
We had it, we had it.
It's too hot.
Well, we tried to sell it at 20 acres. I think we had it at originally 700, and then went down to 650. We did keep reducing it. I met one person in all that time that was interested in buying the whole 20. We, we.
I'm not against.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I get it, I get it. We actually would be happy to sell the remaining. So these folks here are trying to buy the two five acre tracts that are C4 and C3. So they're buying both of them. They're buying 10 acres. And I believe their plan is to do a barn dominium type thing in their dream home. So they don't have an intention of having some big development either. They want to have their dream home. They built a beautiful farm on the corner of, what was it?
Haynes Depot.
Haynes Depot and Leestown Road. It was gorgeous, another hobby farm. So they want to do the same thing here. And then we would be open to selling the remaining as 10 acres. It's just because of those two divots. Nobody's going to buy the five. We realize that. If somebody has horses, they could buy the 10 and still have room for the horses on that piece of property that's not good for anything other than that. And Kim will continue to use it as pasture. So everyone on Muir Lane will still get to see the beautiful farm as they're driving down Muir Lane. We're trying to contain how many driveways were on it. We tried to be very, we met with the highway department multiple times to find the safest place to put those driveways, and we're trying to make as few as possible. We also did not put the driveways where they would love to have it, which is right in front of their property, because it's not safe. It's not safe. It's coming over the hill. There's a guardrail there. We all recognize that. So we really have taken all of this into account. My horse trainer is on Muir Lane. I drive that road literally twice a week. It's beautiful, and everybody I've ever seen drives it very safely and slowly. I take my trailer down it, and I take it slowly. I've never had a problem over there, and I love that farm. I knew the Greeleys. I knew that farm when it was even bigger than it is now. Kim wants to keep it as much as it can possibly be a farm. And she has no intentions to break it down anymore after this. It was just the only way she could afford it was to do this. And it was told to her that it could be done by the parties before. So I think that's it. Oh, by the way, also, on Muir Lane, if you haven't been on Muir Lane, there's about four or five hobby farms on the right-hand side of it, you know? So there are people who've gotten to have their dream. I had a lady call me today that wants me to help her sell one that's eight acres. And it's a hobby farm, just like what we're asking to be put here. So, so you guys have anything to say?
Thank you, Ken. Yeah, Mike?
My name's Mike Jones. I live at 100 Creekside Drive, which would be essentially right across from the property. So what I've heard, I came in and was thinking that they're going to put three big houses, or three houses on this property. But from what I understand, it doesn't sound that way. Sounds like you're going to put one house on this property. So part of the reason I moved out there was the same reason that Mrs. Gregory's been moved out there for years. I see her all the time walking my dog on Muir Lane, is because of the horse farms that are right there. So it sounds like they're going to maintain a fair amount of this property. Couple of things I would take into consideration, traffic is a mess on that road. Something in the future has to get done. That, all the Woodford County side of the development has increased traffic, has increased tractor trailers at all hours of the night on this road. I've talked to multiple people about that, but nothing seems to get done.
Are they coming in from the other way?
They're coming in from both ways. So what happens is, I see Kroger trucks, I see car carriers coming down that road. I don't know if it's GPS or whatever, but that road is not set up for tractor trailers. I spoke to Chad Wallace about this. He said the state was looking into that, and the state police were going to start monitoring that. I haven't seen anything like that happen. So that's a big concern. Doesn't sound like they're going to do anything like that, so, I mean, that's okay. The other thing is, like Mr. Cornet mentioned, the sight distance. So when you come out of Creekside Drive to make the left going towards Woodford County, it's really, really hard to see there. And I'm surprised there hasn't been any significant accidents there, but there is. So something probably needs to be done. Instead of maybe two driveways, one driveway in a situation like that. And my only other request is, and I don't even know if this is something you guys are involved in, but there are zero, well, I shouldn't say zero, there's one fire hydrant on the end of Iron Works and Midway, and there's one closer to the Scott County line, or the Scott Woodford County line. I've argued this for years to try to get another fire hydrant put in, but if you're going to put in another house here, it would help the existing.
They actually are. I actually spoke with the fire department and Kentucky, they're watering the water and putting a hydrant at that corner.
That's perfect.
Because of this.
It's needed to be done for years, so that solves that problem. I don't like to see that horse farm disappear either, because I'd like to see, I live right there, and I like to see, my kids like to see the horses right there as we walk.
There are supposed to be horses on the farm.
So, and we walk Muir Lane all the time, and we see it. So my concern was making sure this wasn't coming into some big development of houses right there. Or, and then just trying to have, fix something on the roadside of things. Because it is, it's becoming a very, very dangerous road.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would need to speak?
Did you have an email to read?
So it was a lot of the points were previously mentioned by the neighbors surrounding. Mostly people are just concerned, or at least Ms. Moore is concerned on Midway Road and some blind spot areas. Muir Lane being rather narrow and difficult for two vehicles to pass one another. The concerns on the buildable area with the carst areas in general, that type of deal. And then trying to retain area aesthetics with the working farm, the horse prevalence, not like a ton of very large houses with nothing around them, just blanket grasses. They wanted, she was concerned that the aesthetic would be lost if this was allowed to subdivide further.
And it sounds like the blind entrance issue was considered when placing the entrance?
Yes. They wanted to make sure it was possible driveway.
Elise, what was this person's name again?
This is Betty Ann Monroe. I don't exactly know which home is hers. Do you know which one is Betty Ann's?
Yes, she's the very end. It's not, I don't think I can see it. Yeah, I've got.
Hair 284 Muir. Yes, yeah.
So on down Muir Road, past our map here.
Yeah, as you kind of go up to the end of it, yes.
All right, thank you.
And there's a lot of horses that, people ride horses down Muir Lane quite often. So any traffic coming up Midway Road and all, we literally have to get off the road because it is just a one lane. And so just, I think the traffic in itself is such an issue. And it's actually, people can't even walk on it. But you get off the road.
Thank you. It sounds like, Elise, from, I'm sorry.
I'm Carol Lloyd, and I live right across from the, you're saying, the only entrance that to the properties that you're buying, right? That you're going to access that already existing road driveway, the property off of Muir Lane?
Bottom blue arrow would be our driveway.
And it's, you said that it would be the farm there that they're selling off, it's right, right in front of our properties?
The address would be Midway Road. There's nothing on Muir Lane.
Okay, the address would be Midway Road. Nothing on Muir Lane is going to come off of, they won't come off of Muir Lane?
No.
Because I was going to say, it's already, the way it is, two cars can't pass without getting over into that driveway that.
Right. The only existing, the existing driveway with the red arrow is the only drive that will be on Muir Lane, and it's already there.
And it's already there.
Yes. There's no additional.
There won't be no additional?
No.
But right there at that spot, entering and exiting that driveway already, if there's an oncoming car coming in, you have to get over in that existing driveway just so that car can pass.
But this development won't change that.
Yeah, we won't.
Yes, they're going to come off Midway Road, so the only, uh, drive is existing.
Okay. And my other question is, is that going to, is Scott County going to change the zoning out there, and does that make that a subdivision instead of agricultural?
No, no zoning change.
It has nothing to do with it.
It's not going to change the zoning. Okay. Still agricultural, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It sounds like to me that, I encourage you to do more of the things like Mr. Jones has done, and get in touch with your county commissioners and the sheriff's department, you know, state police, who. commissioners and the sheriff's department, you know, state police, whomever. If you have tractor-trailers driving on that road, that has absolutely nothing to do with, with development. It has everything to do with that industrial park or, or like he said, GPS. I used to have to drive an RV and I've been taking down some country roads before too that don't know why they did it there. So continue to contact the, the people that can make those kinds of changes because we can't. We can't change the size of the road and who's allowed on it, that sort of thing. So do we have any other questions from the commission, from the staff about this development? Any other questions from the audience?
Like I said, I would just hopefully consider one set driveway rather than two driveways off of Midway Road. It's just adding traffic and it is really hard to see coming off the street.
Yeah, but Mike, adding one driveway instead of two isn't going to change the traffic. You know, there's still going to be two.
It's going to change the, or when people are traveling that road and getting it off the road, that would make a difference. And it's hard getting off the Creekside Drive onto Midway Road. There is a blind spot trying to turn, coming up onto Midway Road right there.
Yeah.
It is really, it is, I have to look like multiple times before I make that turn. And hope and pray every time that I make that turn, I'm not going to get hit because cars do not do 35 on that road. And before you know it, a car is on top of you making that turn. Coming down at you, which is trying to make that turn.
Right.
I know you can't solve that problem, but that's just something to be concerned about.
I think two driveways might slow people down if you have someone else coming in.
No, I've lived out there for 13 years. Two driveways aren't going to slow anybody down.
Well, maybe it's a matter of contacting the police and getting them there and enhancing speed.
I've gone to it for 13 years. You guys receive once you live out there.
We live right there on Leestown Road.
Hey, Tim, we've seen a lot of wrecks.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I will take a motion for this subdivision.
I'll make a motion for approval of FSP 2024-20.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Ms. Singer, excuse me, and a second by Mr. Smith to approve FSP 2024-20. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair of votes, yes. Representative Lee, Mr. Perkins up here to sign your paperwork. And the next item that is, is also avail, um, not available.
Consent eligible.
Consent eligible, that's the word I wanted, is FSP 2024-21, the Duval property, vinyl subdivision plat to divide following parcels from a 26.52 acre parent parcel, 14.1 acres, 7.8 acres, 5.23 acres, and all these located at 1510 and 1360 Wood Lake Road. This is consent eligible. Is there anyone that would like to hear information about this piece of property or is here to speak against it?
I'm not here to speak against it.
Do you have questions about it, Gary?
Scott concerned.
Yeah, just, you know, just. Sure. I'd be glad to go through it.
Okay.
Before we get started, just to point a clarity, the seven acre parcel is actually 7.09, not 7.08. I know it's minor, but I wanted to be upfront and accurate as possible.
It is 08?
No, ma'am.
It's 09?
It's 09.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You've got Graves Road on there too.
Wood Lake Road, excuse me. Surely to goodness, it'll be correct the rest of the way. I apologize. FSP 2024-21, again, a subdivision plat dividing from a 26.53 acre parent parcel. Again, the parcels are sized 14.21, 7.09, and 5.23 acres. Again, this is on Wood Lake Road, excuse me. All zoned A1. Obviously, I messed up on the directions there. Pardon me. No variances. We are recommending approval. This is the aerial view of the subject property. You see Wood Lake, look, Road to the west. Again, zoned A1. More context as to why this is here before us this evening. It was previously subdivided from a larger parent parcel in 2010. 90 acres was the total acreage at the time. This is the plat before us this evening. I'll zoom in for your consideration in just a moment. As you can see here, all three parcels are crossed by two easements. To the west there is, I believe, a 30-foot wide drainage easement. And to the right-hand side there is a, also a utility easement there. Again, there shall be no construction or obstruction of the drainage easement at all. The utility easement there, I believe, is three-phase, so all care should be taken to avoid construction or eliminate disturbance in that area as well. Other areas that are non-buildable, you'll see gray triangles to the east sides of each parcel. Those just generally don't meet our setback requirements as the, as the lots taper down. There are an existing entrance and two proposed entrances. The proposed entrance on the bottom is contingent upon a remove and replace of a stone wall that's there. I received, yes, I was going to say, they received word today that they are working on that. The other proposed entrance has received preliminary approval as well. And all the three entrances have the separation requirements that we do ask for parcels of this size. The two northern and central parcels there are below 10 acres, so they will need health department approval for septic. Again, our final findings here are, we're dividing three parcels from a 26.53 acre parcel at the size of 14.21, 7.09, and 5.23 acres. The proposed plat overall shows the appropriate setbacks, lot size and width requirements for each new parcel. Being under 10 acres, both parcels B2 and B3 will require health department approval. Newly proposed entrances do meet our separation requirements. Again, I mentioned the one with the rock wall adjacent is being addressed and will receive full approval after such. And all the parcels are affected by both the 30-foot drainage easement as well as a 30-foot utility easement, which are on the submitted plat running north and south across the property. As noted on the plat, there will be no construction, permanent structures, temporary or otherwise that'll impede on the drainage easement. Overall, we are recommending approval. And these are all our four standard conditions of approval. I didn't have to note anything about new entrances as they all have received preliminary approval or are finalized.
Any questions from the commission? I'm assuming that that wire fence running across the property, that, that will have no bearing on anything once the property is sold there.
Again, I think we kind of discussed that before. I mean, it'll be up to the new property owner's discretion. It's not something I can speak to. There is a representative and the applicant here themselves. If y'all would like to maybe address questions of those sorts to them.
Okay. She's going out and around.
Oh, he's.
Okay. Thank you. And we have some questions. Come up and state your name.
Greg Henderson. I'm at 1510, I guess the southern part of it. We bought our property from Jeremiah's brother. And the only thing we're concerned is, I guess I could have just talked to them about it. It was, we have friends of ours that showed goats with our grandkids and stuff. And they've had people buy land next to them and they came from out of state. And they've had problems with, they ended up talking to them, suing them about smells and all that stuff. But they're moving next to, I just, I guess wanted to impress that, that people will be moving next to, we got animals, you know, some cows, some goats, some sheep and stuff. Our grandkids, you know, help with the animals and stuff like that. So I don't think there's, I just don't know how to address this, is just to stress that they will be moving next to, I'm not saying a working farm, but there will be some smells that'll be coming across. Just let them know that, hey, you know, there are animals here and, you know, we just.
You get a little next to the farm, you got to have all the smells, right?
I know what I'm saying, but these, these people who've been, they've been, our friends have been sued. And because they've getting rid, they've getting rid of their goats and they're, you know, because they don't like the smell coming across, you know? They did buy the property and they did move on next to a working farm. And, you know, I just, I don't know how we can impress that on people that, you know?
They spend all kinds of money.
So I just, you know, I just might.
Do you guys have the ponds in the back there?
No.
Not behind us.
We're on all sides.
Yeah, that's, they were on the Frankper side, sorry.
Did you say they had to get rid of their goats because?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were sued for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Did they voluntarily get rid of the goats or they went to lawsuits and they?
They just made a lawsuit, a lawsuit.
They lost the lawsuit?
Yes.
What were the prices, do you know? I mean, I'm just taking a tangent, but curious.
I just, you know, I like, I just impressed on you that, you know, whoever you talk to, I don't know, just let them know that, you know, it's got animals on the farm. You're moving out to the country. You're moving to the country. And I know we can't do anything by people suing, because the people who want to sue, they're going to sue. But, but, but seeing that the 14 acres is going to be next to ours, that probably would be some kind of a farm. They, who knows? They might run animals too, whoever buys it. Instead of the five acre and the seven acre and the five acre, so.
But Greg, just for the record, for the future down the road, and maybe, hopefully something's going to be addressed on all these issues. It may be addressed tonight, but just so that we have it in the record. So someone has five acres of land, they have animals on it.
They've had animals there for a long, long time.
People in Scott County are under the impression that you can't have animals on five acres of land.
Now, that I don't, they came from out of state. That I don't know.
But the people who had animals on their land were sued over the smell and they lost.
Yes.
Okay. That's, we'll make sure we got that.
I got a window restriction as far as having animals on top of the, they say on that.
I don't know. They've been, they've had that farm for a long, long time. Yeah.
What's the address of that?
I don't know. I don't know the address.
Oh, that's a good question.
The landowners here on the.
I don't, they're watchers. I don't know.
Okay. Well, I'll find out. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
If I could just throw one thing out, there had to have been deed restrictions. I mean, I certainly don't know, but, but you can't move into some place and sue people who've got animals and make them get rid of them. There must have been deed restrictions.
So as far as that lane goes, it won't affect us anyway?
There's no way that should affect us.
That shouldn't affect us at all.
No, no, that's not going to.
Because we're 12 and a half acres.
Because you're not, you haven't signed off on deed restrictions.
No.
So that, that's not going to affect you at all.
They're bringing in a bunch of pigs.
Okay. That's good. Maybe we can buy some sausages. We would live with it, yeah.
If I can get some sausage out of them.
But, but Brett, they're show, they're, they're show pigs.
Okay. We had one of those.
We're, we're getting a little, a little giddy here, so.
And I was part of the problem.
Yeah. I was part of the problem there. Is there anyone else that had any questions for, for the staff? Okay. I will take a, is there anything else you need to present?
No.
Okay. I'll take a, a motion.
I'll make a motion and we approve F, FSP 2024-21.
And I will second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Jesse. Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
No.
Uh, Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
And the chair of votes, yes. If you'll come and see Mr. Perkins up here. And the last item on our agenda for consideration tonight is.
It is consent eligible too, they said.
Uh, FSP 2024-22 Triport Industrial Park. It's a preliminary subdivision plat. The subdivides 7.76 acre industrial zone lot into two parcels located at 304 West Yeson Way. And this also is consent eligible. Is there anyone here that is opposed to this development or has questions about it? Seeing none, and it is consent eligible, I will take a motion.
I make a motion that we accept FSP 2024-22. That's right.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I have a motion by Mr. Jesse and Mr. Stone made a second. Uh, Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
And chair of votes, yes. If you will come to see Mr. Perkins up here and sign your paperwork. All right. Well, I guess we should have made the announcement about the, about the land, the.
Comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan, while everybody was here, but they'll see it in the paper. We have another meeting for the comprehensive plan scheduled later this month. And we're planning on doing it in multiple locations that Elise is working on right now.
Will that be on the same day or different locations?
No, different, different days.
We're going to have a presentation of the comp plan, the whole plan itself, and, and provide, you know, an opportunity for people to make comments and, and give us feedback on May 28th at the library, the Scott County Library on South Broadway. And then we're going to have two more open house type meetings. We haven't finalized those dates, but it'll be the following week and we'll announce that. We'll let you all know.
Are you going to do Stampin' Ground, one in Stampin' Ground and one in Sadeville?
Um, we were going to do them, one at BCTC, like at the business park. And the other one, we haven't determined where it would be. I mean, we were thinking a school location, so.
And we were, we were talking about going to Stampin' Ground, getting the western part of the county there, so.
Yeah, we're trying to fit east side of the interstate, west side of the interstate to have it those sides of the community. And those perspectives, we're still final, I guess, as Joe stated, we're still finalizing those ones. And this is like the chapters and stuff. We have to think the whole plan of our community.
What time on the 28th?
On May, May 28th, we were thinking six o'clock because we got the, I think we got the room from five on. So we're thinking six to eight or six to closing.
You're expecting a bunch of people?
Um, probably. There'll probably be good a number of people. I would expect in the 100 range. I don't think it'd be more than that. But once we announce that there's two work sessions, kind of open house type meetings after the main meeting, you know, maybe it'll spread out because people, you know, have three opportunities to show up, so.
And we could attend all those meetings.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. Encouraged.
Yeah. And I have a process question. So when people come to these meetings, these different locations, they have, they were actually testified, have input? Does that get recorded? Their, what they're, what they have to say about it? Does anyone, other than, maybe you go through that. So they come in and they.
Well, I mean.
Can make a statement and?
Yeah. I mean, the general format will be, we'll present, we'll make a presentation. So we'll have maybe 20 to 30 minutes to present the comp plan, kind of what's in it, what the recommendations of it are. And then we'll have an opportunity, probably like a public hearing, let people speak. Either, you know, at a microphone or just come, just make their comments. We'll record the meeting itself.
Be a record.
Yeah. So we'll keep a record of it. But we'll also allow people to make written comments to leave feedback, you know? to leave feedback, you know, written feedback as well.
That's what I was going to say, at the, at the first one we had at the extension office, we had different tables set up for, uh, different areas of concern on the comp plan and people could walk around and, and they filled out forms and made comments or asked questions about it there so that we, we had all of those to, and then went back to the comprehensive plan committee and we reviewed those.
So then when you review that, that's when you make those changes to the plan, but in the end, when the plan is all written, then it comes back to this whole group and it's still at that point, that plan is not etched in stone, it can be adjusted, is that right?
Uh, the comp plan can be adjusted at any time, so it's, it's a guide for decisions, so it's not an ordinance, it's, it's both a, a land use guide, so it's a, a map and goals and objectives that kind of are supposed to guide your decisions and guide council and fiscal courts decisions, but it's also a series of action items to change ordinances, to change policies, to create new policies, to, you know, take on projects. So it, the plan itself is a guide, but it has action steps that you can take to implement the plan.
So I'm just trying to make sure I complete the process. I have, people ask a lot of questions, I make sure I understand them, so. So once that's all done, it comes to us, then we actually do vote on it, then this also the county vote on it and the city council also vote on it? Do they make changes then too, or how does?
No, well, legally, the comp plan is a set of goals and objectives and then a, then a, a written plan that describes how those goals and objectives are going to be met and that written plan then will have action items in it that implement the goals and objectives. So the legislative bodies only have to adopt the goals and objectives legally, uh, which they've already done. Then the planning commission adopts the plan itself, but we always take the plan after planning commission approves it, you know, hopefully, um, you know, even if we have to make changes before you approve it, you will approve it eventually. Um, if you deny it, then the old plan is really kind of still in place, but planning commission approves it, but we take it to the legislative bodies anyway because we want them to endorse it and follow it, so, and we don't want any kind of friction or, you know, schism between the planning commission and the legislative bodies, we all want to be on the same page. So we will take it to them, but legally, they don't, they're not the authority for planning and zoning, that's why they appoint you, so this body is the one that has to approve.
So how do we get in this process of where you have questions about the use of land in Scott County? How can that be? Like, is, is there a way to have, I know at the last meeting, Mr. Correll spoke about, about trying to form some kind of a, a group, is that?
Yeah.
Part of this whole process or?
Um, that's separate from the comp plan, so that'll be like one of the action items. So we want to look at, you know, the comp plan has a land use plan, a map and goals and objectives, but one of the action items is, you know, look at farmland preservation and get a group together that can make recommendations to the legislative body for policy changes and for ordinance changes. And I don't want to kind of not answer your question, but there is a, that is an action item in there and the judge executive asked us to go ahead and form that committee. So I've sent out an email already to a group that showed interest, you know, soil conservation, um, Rita Jones actually was invited to participate in that, so a smaller group, and we would like to, Mary and Charlie are going to be on that group and we'd like to get one or two other members, well, we invited you, you didn't respond yet. You may not be on there, but because.
But I'd like to be on there, on that.
Okay. Okay. Um, and I was going to open that up, that was one of the things I was going to bring up, that if there were one or two other members that would like to participate and, you know, we, we want to get planning commission participation because, you know, these recommendations are going to come to the planning commission and this group will develop recommendations for, you know, I'm not saying they'll, they'll say this, but increase the minimum lot size or change the cluster rules so that they're used more.
Obviously, that needs to be that fact.
So, yeah, it.
How about the ideal that we, about, I did a different type of house in Scott County, like the tiny home type community, is that a part of this process too, or is that different?
That's, that's part of the comp plan, but it's not really part of the, this group will be more agricultural ag preservation, farmland preservation and rural development, so tiny homes are kind of a part of that already, but tiny homes aren't, you know, not allowed now, so, so they are permitted, but there's not, you know, they're not necessarily promoted, but those are more urban type issues, not necessarily rural development.
But do we have something now to, in existing zoning for where they are allowed, or does that need to be updated for the city of doors?
They are allowed within our existing zoning, so you could do them currently.
In fact, they're allowed in any residential zone, it's just that the lots are bigger than perhaps that would otherwise call for. I mean, for example, we have 10,000 square foot lots in some instances, are you going to put an 800 square foot or smaller house on it? So there might need to be a classification developed for smaller lots that would make it even more appropriate, but as it is, no, they're perfectly permissible in every residential zone now.
So how can that be addressed so that's more, I guess, more clear to people?
This board make a motion, tell him to study that issue and come back with a recommendation.
Study the tiny home issue or the?
Well, well, just a, a, another lot classification size that would make that more, uh, appealing to development, because as it is, you would probably waste, not, not wasting, that's a terrible word, but using up more land than would be necessary or appropriate for the smaller houses with the classifications we have now. So if we come back with an R4 or something, you know, that allows a, I don't know, a 2,000 square foot lot maybe?
3,000, yeah.
Yeah, or something, that would be, that would be conducive.
Affordable house, I, I want to turn a different type of housing.
Yeah.
And that would technically be more affordable, but I, I would hope that we can move in that direction so people have an option.
But that's something that you all could literally ask to do or even ask the former committee to actually study that and come back the recommendations as well.
Could we, former committee about, former committee?
No, we, we had that one and it didn't work.
Do you have any input on that about, have you heard any other of your colleagues talking about what they're doing in other places with, with smaller lot size or now people are maybe downsizing as opposed to, we've seen upsizing for so long and now major shrinkage because of cost? Have you, do you all discuss?
Um, not, not specifically tiny homes, I haven't discussed it with any, I mean, I have in, you know, gone to conferences or, you know.
Harold Dean is, is seeing.
Webinars.
A development down in Tennessee, I know there's a, a development, I've been in contact with, um, a, a developer in, in Lancaster that has a tiny home, uh, development down there that I plan on going to visit pretty soon, so there are some around, I, I think there's one in Paducah.
Paducah's going to have the first one in their city.
Yeah, so there are.
It's another option.
Coming up, yeah.
Another option.
Yeah.
Playing around here, keep going up, we all going to be in there.
Well, I mean, the only other thing I would say with that whole, the whole discussion, I mean, everybody, I think, almost unanimously wants to see farmland preser, preserved and it, you know, there are a lot of issues driving kind of what we're seeing, but, you know, tonight we saw requests for eight new parcels to be created in the county, there's over 7,000 parcels in the county, so it's, you know, I wouldn't necessarily blow it out of proportion, you know, it is a small, it is, ha, does happen incrementally and before you know it, I mean, there are, you know, large areas that are impacted with five acre lots, but we still have time, I mean, it's just, it was just eight lots tonight, so maybe five next month, so, you know, if we address it quickly, there's still plenty of time to.
If I could throw one other thought out, and it's not like we've just talked about this the last couple, three years, this has been studied and studied, we've gone to fiscal courts, I don't know how many different times, and it's just that we've never gotten a consensus as to how to address it. Uh, I don't think anybody's ever said, oh, no, I want to use up the land, no one's ever said that, but we've never really come up with a good plan for, you know, giving people options, but at the same time preserving farmland. That's, that's a very thorny issue.
There's a lot of discussion about PDR, but ultimately, the money it would take to fund a PDR that would actually be comparable to what folks get for development, it's unsustainable.
It's not, it's not the same.
You know, and along.
Joe, you said eight lots, we better recount that. We've done three on Woodlake.
Well, eight new, eight new lots, so one of them was one and one to three, so that's two new ones and then, so I, I use my.
But I, you know, after the workshop on, on Monday, I got to think that we're talking about losing farmland and you, and you get to counties, um, like Boone and Campbell up in northern Kentucky, do they even have any farmland left? Uh, you know, at some.
They got a little ring around the south part.
Olden County?
Yeah.
The west side of Olden County?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Olden County? Oh, I thought you said Owen, I'm like, you've seen Owen County.
You know, but some of these built up areas.
Still live in Owen County and I'm born, I have a lot.
At some point in time, they sell off that last farm, you know, and it's all residential and commercial and industrial.
Well, and I was reading that Bowling Green is a lot like that. Bowling Green is, say, this big, but the development part, you know, of Warren County is about three times the size. I don't know how accurate that is, but they didn't require it all to be annexed and in an urban services boundary, so now you have more urban type development outside the city than you've got inside.
But you've got a, a Bowling Green original resident sitting right next to you there, so, aren't you from Bowling Green?
Me? No, I'm from Ashland.
Ashland.
I'm from Greenham County.
Yeah, 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 I, for some reason I.
And they wouldn't let me in up there, so I know nothing about, about Greenham County.
Is that Flatwoods?
It is Flatwoods.
I was there today.
I'm glad you made it back.
I want you to sing some "A Key Breakin' Heart" now, David.
All right, we've got one other.
Yeah.
Item we, we need to do elections. Uh, we finally got everyone here, uh, so that we can, uh, get this done and put this down. Elise has got, um, uh, some papers there to, to fill out. We had had, uh, interest from Harold Dean, Jesse and Mary Singer, uh, about being vice chair, uh, is there anyone else that would like to be considered, uh, on that ticket All right. If, uh, if you will pass those out and.
What was that look? Squinting, you know.
Can you say everyone just abstains, so we just keep doing this?
That's right, over and over and over.
So this is a vote for the vice chair who will sit in if the chair isn't present and the vice chair is also automatically on the executive committee.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, write-in candidate.
None of the above.
I'll write it, then you sing "A Key Breakin' Heart."
Skip that, give them to Charlie.
While the mic's on.
Why are you giving it to me? I don't want to get involved in this. Well, come here.
You're our legal counsel there. So anything else after the election, Joe, that we need to?
Um, depending on who's elected, then we just need to go over the executive committee, make sure that we have the five members, you know, make sure we're sure of that. Two have to be city appointees, two have to be county appointees, minimum.
For the executive committee?
For the executive, but it's five members, so that the fifth can be either city county or a joint appointee.
Joe, if you decide you all want to have a comprehensive plan meeting in Stampin' Ground, you can use my, my.
Office.
Bar in the meeting or whatever I have at the farm. It's a 40 by 80 building, I've got tables and chairs and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Because I don't think there's nothing else around there that's going to hold 100 people.
Well.
I guess the school.
Yeah, school, we probably won't, honestly, the, the, the workshops, we probably won't get 100, just because last time we only got like 20 and we had.
Okay, I just thought.
We got nine people.
And, and somebody wrote in another name, so it's 441.
441. Who wrote in? We're at 2 square 1. We must have. We'll be happy.
Who's the new candidate? Can we know the new candidate?
Well, sure.
The write-in?
Oh, all right, Dewan got one vote.
Dewan got a vote.
You are the spo, you, you, sir, are the spoiler.
I decline.
So re, revote, Dewan declines to be.
We're going to do it again.
Whoever voted for Dewan, he doesn't want to be.
Everybody votes for Dewan.
Everybody votes for Dewan.
Rock expert voices, because guys are indecisive.
Careful, that's.
Okay.
No.
So what, how long, how long does this term go?
A year.
A year.
One year and.
Not as long as the vote does.
This is an important question.
The term, I, I would say, I would defer to Charlie, but I, we, we elect every March, so I would say the term would go to March, so it would be less.
Yeah, yeah, it goes to next March.
Right.
Right.
Well, I guess, since I probably not going to be here in March, more than likely, then I probably should not be here.
Just be done, okay.
Because I cannot serve on this commission if I get elected to city county.
That, that's true.
So I can serve through January whenever the vote, so if this goes through March, then that makes no sense for y'all to go through this, so.
Okay.
I withdraw.
Okay.
That doesn't make any sense.
Well, if, if that's the case, then in a sense, we, we've got two people who withdrew, that leaves only one left, I guess she wins with one, or do you want another vote? I don't, I don't know that it makes a lot of difference.
I just don't want, there's no sense in going through this.
Yeah.
Yes, I would say, yeah, Mary elected vice chair.
How about a ruling from the chair?
Well, actually, excuse me, I take that back because that's not a majority vote, she
got four, so no, Mary couldn't do it based on four, so no, we have to vote again.
Okay.
I didn't think of it that way.
Justin's already done.
I said, I mean, I was like the person coming on that just needed to vote, because it was put before last time, I'll just.
Split it again.
We'll be done.
Well, do, do we need to?
After this, you voted more.
Dewan said that he didn't want to be considered, so I will take a motion to.
But I hope y'all understand why, it doesn't make any sense for me to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
You still got to revoke though.
Yeah, but we don't have to, all in favor of Mary being vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
That's really awkward.
Eight, eight to one, we will put that in the record, Dave.
All right, all right, but before we, before we break up.
Thank you.
I think we need to confirm who the executive committee is.
Okay, so we've got the, the chair and the vice chair.
Mm-hmm.
Dewan?
Dewan is a city appointee, Mary's a county appointee, although she lives in the city.
Which is also the county.
It's the city. Uh, so we need, uh, David's on there, which is county, and Dan, county, which is county, so we've got, we've got two cities and we've got two counties and then one that can go either way.
Your city, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah.
And a switch in.
Yeah, so appointed you, county appointed you, right?
No, it's both.
Both, oh, you're the joint one.
Yeah, he's joint, so we, we've got two city and we've got two county.
Okay.
We jarred people in this, in the, in the source, the county, we jarred people in the city, is that correct, population wise?
Population wise, yeah.
Well, I live in the city, I mean, I could, I could serve, I guess it'd be my reason, is that also?
So we got, we get, no, we got five, one, two, three.
As long as you got your five.
Four, five.
Dan, or James?
Dan and, Dan and Dewan.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, that's, okay.
We've got all of our bases covered there.
I think so.
You're good.
I have my financial.
Charlie, point your vice.
Oh, no, I don't. It has a whole.
Well, there's not a, I go to December of 2025.
Because they have.
Yes.
I can still finish it before I leave.
That was an excellent point.
Where are you leaving?
And and people need not to be afraid to speak.
Anybody, anybody else need, is there anybody else that hasn't turned in a financial statement?
I tell people all the time, I just. I've been a regulator and a defender.
Mine's up there.
Oh, you do, don't you?
Good. Let's start with the defense and go on to the regulators.
This is the only one.
That's the only one, however, that's only for the county.
Right, the city has.
Your next job, be a bounty hunter.
We're a bail bondsman.
Yes, yeah.
Put mail.
Keep that trajectory going.
That's why I had two to fill out.
Is that what they said? They held them to the lady?
No.
Did away with it.
What?
I don't know. Okay. I got something in the middle, but maybe it was this.
Adjournment for it.
I have it filled out in my.
Good idea.